Doesn't, we can put it in one of these portable ones, maybe?
He goes, he got it. There we go. I believe we do. All right. Call a meeting to order at 10 seconds after six o'clock. Um, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Vice President, Commissioner Newell, Commissioner Schulte, Commissioner Kowash, Commissioner Groh.
Here.
Uh, President Swanson let me know he wouldn't be here tonight and we're expecting Commissioner Banford anytime. The quorum's present.
Sounds good. I will entertain um approval of the minutes. Anybody have a chance to look over it? I didn't see anything. Would someone like to make a motion? Once you have a chance.
I'll, I'll move to uh accept the minutes as written.
Seconded, and there he is, just in time to vote. Did you have any concerns with the minutes? Okay, and we'll do a voice vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, none, minutes are approved. Alrighty, we will start the first public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding the property at five two nine Northwest Crater Lake Drive in Dallas, Oregon. This is an official public hearing before the Dallas Planning Commission. I now declare this public hearing open at six oh, we'll call it two. Ah, as the application is subject to land use proceedings recognized by state law, I will read the following statement. A failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the commission and the parties inadequate opportunity to respond to each issue precludes appeal to the State Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Please direct all testimony to the record and the applicable criteria lifted and listed in the staff report or two criteria in the Dallas Development Code you believe applies to the decision. Applicable approval criteria are found in Dallas Development Code, Chapter four point four point zero four zero. This time I will ask if any member of the planning commission has a conflict of interest, site visit, or ex parte contact to declare. Anyone? Seeing no one, we will continue. This hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We will begin with the staff report followed by questions of staff. Thereafter, we will hear from the applicant, including members of the applicant team for a total of 15 minutes. This may be followed by questions from the commission. Thereafter, we will hear from all others interested in presenting testimony on this item before the commission. Each person will be provided five minutes to testify. We will then provide the applicant with five minutes for rebuttal. After we have heard all testimony, I will close the hearing and ask the commission to deliberate and then ask if there is a motion in response to this proposal. In this case, the commission's decision is final unless the decision is appealed. At this time, we'll start with the staff report. May we have the staff report, please? And unless the applicant shows up, we'll probably going straight through that. Um, please, if you would continue.
Yes, uh, so as you mentioned, this is a short term vacation rental, five twenty nine Northwest Crater Lake Drive. Um, short term vacation rentals are allowed in all of our residential zones here, but uh they do require conditional use permit. And so that is what brings it to you today. Um, the Google aerial imagery, as you can see, is a little bit out of date, so you don't have the picture of the house there. Um, but you can see from the drawings that it is a, a single family home, uh, typical of, of that area. The approval criteria that we have um for conditional uses um talks about the, the subject property being uh suitable for the use and uh negative impacts of that use on adjoining properties being able to be mitigated. Um, we have additional uh special approval criteria for uh specifically for uh short term vacation rentals. Um, regarding the provision of off-street parking. Uh, maximum occupancy of one person per 200 square feet. Uh, beg pardon. Uh, so yes, so uh, and then providing services for uh garbage and solid waste collection and having a designated local representative. Um, and so the, the written staff report goes into uh some greater level of detail on all of that, but uh, the summation of that is that all of those approval criteria um either have been met or can be met through reasonable conditions of approval. So um staff are recommending that uh the uh conditional use permit be approved uh subject to uh conditions of approval. Um, specifically that the project uh is completed as shown to the planning commission. Uh, the applicant complies with all building and fire code requirements. Uh, the applicant registered with the city finance office for the collection of transient lodging tax. Uh, the maximum of occupants be limited to nine persons and that a local representative uh be designated to manage the rental. So uh with those conditions, uh staff are recommending approval.
Very much. Um, or am I correct in assuming the applicant has not shown up?
Yes, they said that they had a family emergency and would be flying out of Portland this evening, so.
All right, um, then we move on to all others interested in presenting testimony on this item before the commission. Does anyone like to say something about this short term vacation rental? Seeing none, do we have anyone in the queue?
We have no callers.
Okay, then we will move on. Um, no rebuttal. Um, so I guess I will close the, actually, I'm not sure if it's appropriate to ask a question of staff um as part of the staff report at this point. I think that usually happens. Um, I noticed in the uh agenda, it only refers to Dallas Development Code four point four point zero four zero. But in the actual staff report, it also refers to.
Site designer view approval criteria under four point three and special use standards under uh two point two one two zero. Right, and so those are called uh by reference under uh four point four zero four zero.
So by citing the four point four, all the rest are covered. Okay, I wanted to make sure we hadn't missed anything. Alrighty, in that case, uh, we will move on and close the hearing at six oh eight, probably one of the fastest hearings we've had in a long time, which is just fine.
Step one.
All right, okay, uh, let's see, we did that. And does any, does the commission have any questions for staff? Oh boy, okay. Um, we'll now hear from the applicant. Hey, a minute, how come it says? I don't, I'm messing up my, my thing, it looks like. It says to go, never mind. Okay, all right, uh, no questions to the applicant, none of that. Uh, nobody else wants to testify, already did all that. And then I closed things, okay, so everything's fine. Yeah, any final comments from staff of the city? Wait a minute, how come it says that I close the hearing first? Yeah, all right, I'm sorry, I'm, but we're hopefully okay. Um, all right, uh, were there any comments from the city attorney? I did not do that, okay, sounds good. Uh, we'll now have deliberations. Does anyone have anything to say about this particular item? Hearing none, I don't have any. Uh, is there a motion by the commission?
The conditional use permit with the condition stated in the staff report. I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? Probably not. Uh, we'll now vote on the motion. Motion is to approve the conditional use permit twenty five point twenty five dash zero eight with the recommended conditions in the staff report. Uh, we'll have a uh voice vote. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. All right, the okay, the motion passes uh unanimously. An order reflecting the commission's decision tonight will be mailed to the applicant and all participants of record within 10 business days. No, I got through that one.
So before we move on to the next one, uh, we did uh forget to introduce our, our special guest here, so.
He even had the name tag.
I know, he even has a name tag. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Daniel Mestes. I am a member of the Youth Advisor Council and it's a pleasure to be here.
Apologize most profusely. I'm glad you remembered to do that, we even talked about it. Okay, so, one down, one to go. Alrighty, this public hearing, we're going to start. This public hearing is regarding the property at, oh boy, nineteen eighty five Skies the Limit Way. Uh, this is for very variation, very, ver- what is it? Variance, thank you. I somehow I got stuck on that word. Twenty five dash zero five. Um, and SGN twenty five zero one Fuel Station Sign Permit Exception. Uh, this is a continuance from last month's meeting. I will still get to read this wonderful dialogue. Public hearing is regarding the property at, just said that. This is an official public hearing before the Dallas Planning Commission. I now declare this public hearing open at six twelve P M. As the application is subject to land use proceedings recognized by state law, I will read the following statement. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the commission and the parties inadequate opportunity to respond to each issue precludes appeal to the State Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Please direct all testimony to the record and the applicable criteria listed in the staff report or two criteria in the Dallas Development Code you believe applies to the decision. Applicable approval criteria are found in Dallas Development Code, Chapter three point six point one two zero. At this time, I will ask if any member of the planning commission has a conflict of interest, site visit, or ex parte contact to declare. Seeing none. Uh, this hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We will begin with the staff report followed by questions of staff. Thereafter, we will hear from the applicant, including members of the applicant team for a total of 15 minutes. This may be followed by questions from the commission. Thereafter, we will hear from all others interested in presenting testimony on this item before the commission. Each person will be provided five minutes to testify. We will then provide the applicant with five minutes for rebuttal. After we have heard all testimony, I will close the hearing and ask the commission to deliberate and then ask if there is a motion in response to this proposal. In this case, the commission's decision is final unless the decision is appealed. At this time, we'll start with the staff report. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, uh, so the printed staff report that you have in front of you uh is the same uh staff report that we had from last month. Uh, so there are no changes to that. Um, staff were uh recommending that the sign code exception be approved. Um, finding that uh the request was necessary to prevent a hardship uh that the granting of the exception would not uh result in material damage or prejudice to the property vicinity and that the request would not be detrimental to community standards and the appearance of the city. Um, at the uh hearing last month, uh, planning commission did uh request that the applicant provide additional information. Um, and so I do have a display uh materials of that. Um, they were submitted after the uh um, after the uh uh publication of the printed report, so I don't have that uh in front of you, but I do have it here on our screen. So let me pull that up for you. Maximize. Get rid of that, get rid of that. Maximize. So um, as we discussed last month, there were two proposals uh to be considered, a six foot monument sign and a twenty foot pylon sign. Um, applicant has now uh shown proposal for a sort of an intermediate option with a fifteen foot uh monument sign. So there is that uh revision to the proposal. And then the uh commission was asking for some information on what this proposal would actually look like on the ground. And so uh we do have uh some visualizations of that here. So um, at this point, I would be inclined to turn this over to the applicant to discuss uh the visualizations that they have prepared. Um, if uh council, uh city, uh, this planning commission is prepared to do so.
Um, do we have any questions at this point for staff?
Last meeting, what was the hardship? Just that it's setback?
Uh, good question, yes. So the hardship uh relates to the uh sort of the overall uh site configuration um and the fact that the planning commission has already approved um an oversized uh directional board um listing the tenants at the site. Um, so it's a, an exception to the total number of pylon signs allowed, um, as well as the increase in, in the size, so. Um, but yes, the uh fuel stations, they have somewhat of a, a unique requirement to display uh pricing. So um, that is a, a, a constraint that uh most other businesses do not face. Um, and so given the geographic constraint of the site having a very small frontage, um, yeah, that seemed a, a reasonable hardship to be avoided.
If I may interject and ask another question, I believe from the applicant's materials from before, they stated that this um sign is actually on a separate lot. So the issue of two signs on the same lot, it seems to me is a moot point and not an issue at this time.
So the two signs are on the same, well, no, cause I guess the one is on the right of way. Yeah. Yeah, so the, the display board with all of the tenants was placed in the right of way.
So it's not on the lot, so we don't have that issue at all.
That is.
So the issue is only realistically, the height of the sign was the main. Um, and if I can regurgitate some of the issue, um, the um area where the sign is to be placed is six feet below the level of the road surface was one of the more salient points. And so the idea of a twenty foot sign to get it high enough to be able to see from enough distance to be able to react, it does have the prices on the sign um so that one can see that. Um, and there were some issues about whether the um, it being high or low uh would be a distraction for drivers on the road. So I think that's most of the reason we asked for a continuance for more.
Thing is, um, there were a couple neighbors that commented, they thought it would be it would be light pollution, cause it might go into their houses or shine in their backyards. It was unclear whether that was the case or not. That's part of the reason that we asked for placement.
That gets you ready to go? All right, we will ask for the applicant. Enter and sign in, please.
Uh, Charles Fisher, representing the applicant. Um, I'm with Lock Engineers here in town. Um, a continuation from last month's meeting. Um, you asked for mockups and kind of what things were going to look like uh to be able to make um an informed decision. So I have prepared um a number of different uh mockups. I'll start with just a general kind of what the sign looks like in place. Um, and then go from there to, to show kind of what uh drivers would see as they approach the, as, as they approach the site. Um, so this is taken about fifty feet, looking as if the driver was going to be going westbound. This is the twenty foot tall pylon sign, and the base of the sign is about five feet below the center of Cloud Corner Road. Um, and you'll notice it's set back quite a ways, and that's because uh the additional right of way there. Um, Cloud Corner Road is centered within a sixty foot portion of right of way, and then there's an, an old county right of way of forty feet to the north of that sixty feet. And so this sign, uh, the edge, the, the roadside edge would be sixty three feet from edge of pavement, the north edge of pavement. So it's, it's quite a, quite a ways back. Um, these mockups were generated with a uh basically a, a calibrated uh calibrated two by four, as much as a calibrated two by four can be, of twenty foot long um with a, a plate at the top that was of a particular size. And then the math was done from there based upon the different locations. So, and you can see here the uh, the, the tenant sign that's, is in the right of way, uh, fully within the right of way. Uh, the right of way line is basically where this orange silt fence is, just for. So this is the fifteen foot uh sign at that same location. You can see that calibrated uh two foot by three foot piece at the top of the sign that was used to do the math. Um, and then uh glare was also something that had come up uh quite a bit previously. The, the, as the you know, the price gets closer to the driver's eye, I think the glare would actually become more of an issue. So, um, and we, we uh, we make no bones about the fact that if we are forced to do a monument sign of some sort, whether it be two code or whether it be the proposed monument sign, which is eight foot uh tall by ten foot wide, um, with a large portion of that actually just being a gray background. Um, as you can see, uh, we would be building that up some. Um, I, I think a four foot berm may actually be uh more than we can realistically do uh based on the fact that we've got little strips of wetland on either side, uh, north and south of us. But this is kind of uh, you know, the highest I would expect any sort of monument sign to, to go. So then, uh, let's see, I can barely see that. So then, as far as the driver's eye, we'll go to the furthest. This would be four hundred and fifty feet uh to the east, so for the westbound driver. Um, each of these photos was taken at the center of the lane at three and a half foot above the road surface, as would be the um, you know, the, the height and location that we, you would normally use for uh likes, um, stopping sight distance calculations. And so at four hundred and fifty feet, uh, the only sign that's visible at all is the, the twenty foot pylon sign. And it would be just the, just the M of Marathon Fuel would, would be the only thing you'd be able to see at that location. At three hundred and thirty feet, um, three hundred and thirty is about the distance for a, a rather slow uh deceleration to be able to safely turn in from fifty miles an hour, cause this is, this is fifty mile an hour uh posted um speed limit. At this point, the twenty foot pylon sign um can be fully seen, uh, prices just basically fairly typical. This is, as you can see, um, lower than the treetops. Um, and um, you know, kind of with the uh, the depression that this is in, the five foot depression, it's, it's going to feel like somewhat of a, a lower sign, even with the twenty footer. So the fifteen foot, same, same idea, it's the, the, the prices on the fifteen foot pylon sign are starting to get down uh in line with where the driver would be looking down the road. And you can kind of tell, this is a little small based on the fact that it's a, a ways away, but the elevation that the, that the, that the lighted uh portion of the sign is basically in line with um, you know, oncoming traffic, you know, like lights, um, headlights coming at you, that sort of thing. And then the, the, the monument sign, the sign accepted monument sign, eight foot tall by, by ten foot wide on a four foot berm um is fully seen as well. Um, the, the, the price is actually slightly higher than it is in the fifteen foot just based on the orientation of the, of the price and the, and the, the, the M for monument between the you can kind of see, this mouse is really touchy. Then from uh the other direction, eastbound, at that same three hundred and thirty feet, you can't even see anything due to the vegetation. Um, and this, the vegetation that's in the way is, is technically riparian. We're not, nobody's supposed to remove it. I mean, things do get removed, but uh, and that's due to um, the ditch is actually a tributary of the east fork of Ash Creek. Um, if you were to zoom in, you would, whoops, if you were to zoom in, you would barely be able to see um, the, the two by four kind of through a gap in the tree, it's back in here. So uh, the next closest um shot I took is two hundred and fifty feet. And at that location, there's still vegetation in the way. And just uh, you know, assuming that And just uh, you know, assuming that this vegetation were to be, to removed or trimmed back by, by the neighbor, because we, that's, that's not, it's actually, this portion is actually in the right of way, but it's on the neighbor's frontage, I believe. You know, so I mean, I showed this where it would be if that vegetation were gone. And there's the 15 foot pylon sign at 250 foot eastbound. Again, um, the price is about in, in line with the, the driver's eye. And then the 20 foot, assuming vegetation removal. Just the top of the sign is visible of the 20 foot sign. And one of the prices is visible if this vegetation were, were still here. Uh, the diesel, I guess, you know, just wouldn't be seen quite yet. But as far as um the different sign options go, um, you know, we think that the 20 foot sign is the best for, for, you know, for us and the best as far as getting it out of kind of the plane at which the driver's eye is going to be. But um, yeah, any, any questions? Is anybody want to see anything?
This is only about the sign, but usually with gas stations, you have the canopy covering that's also lit, probably has pricing. So, I mean, I'm struggling with the hardship. I think it's visible, but there will be also the the lighting, most likely logos and pricing on the canopy as well. Is that the case?
Sure, there will be on, on the canopy. The, the canopy due to that wetland and do we have the ability to see the, the site plan?
So I don't believe I have the site plan on this USB drive, but I can go and get that.
I don't want to go into it too much. I don't want to deviate from what you're discussing, but it's hard for me. I'm just bringing it up in context because, you know, of course the sign by itself. You, I think you did a great job presenting it, but I mean, there's lighting and other things that will contribute to the visibility of.
Uh, the canopy itself is going to be set back significantly. It's, it's, I.
Yeah. I was just praising it as a discussion, as a point.
I would just commend you for taking the challenge and doing it very well. That's a very, very helpful. I hear from those in attendance tonight who would like to address the commission on this item. Please raise your hand if you'd like to testify and state your name and address for the record once you're up by the microphone. Go ahead. Wait till you get there. So you're by the microphone. Hang on just a second, Ben. It doesn't look like her microphone's on. It's not turning red.
Bring that um a little bit closer.
Microphone down. So it points to your mouth. There you go. There you go. Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Sorry. Okay. Do I need to state my name again?
Please.
Okay. Elizabeth Underwood, and I'm back on court in court. Um, the, thank you for doing the 15 foot sign. For, as a commuter, I commute 140 miles a day. Um, I, I think of any of the signs, the 15 foot would definitely be the most appropriate. Um, there are neighbor houses that aren't in the layout that you can see. So there's houses on either side of that. There's houses across the street that should probably consider, be considered with the, the sign and the lighting. Um, I think the 20 foot is, is just way too high for out there. The streetlights in, at Godsey Road, that's another consideration. There's not even streetlights out there for what, a half a mile before this gas station sign will be. So it's pretty dark. I commute, I drive that road regularly tonight, coming back from Monmouth. There were maybe 15 cars on the road at six o'clock. Uh, Saturday night, there's maybe four or five. So I don't see it as a, as a station that's going to be open all night. One of the things I would like to say, and I don't know if you can add these provisions in, is that the um, if you do approve the sign, that it's to be powered off when the station's not open, maybe? Um, that would be helpful to the neighbors that are trying to sleep. I don't know if you can add those additions in. I think the 20 foot's too, too tall. I think the 15 foot of all the options is probably the most appropriate as somebody who drives a lot and drives back roads and, and things like that. So that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have anyone in the queue, Ben?
We do not.
Okay. If there are no other persons who would like to speak, um, let's see, and we didn't have any questions for her. Sorry. I didn't give you a chance. Okay. Um, we will now have the applicant five minutes for rebuttal.
Just want to point out that the people that are directly across Cloud Corner Road will not even really see the sign because it's, it's intended to point east and west. I don't know exactly how wide those, the sign is, but I'm anticipating it's going to be about, about 12 inches uh wide, and that's all they would see really. Thickness, yes, thickness.
Thank you. Alrighty. Uh, are there any final comments from the staff or the city attorney? Hearing seeing none. Uh, now declare the public hearing closed at 6:33. Maybe we'll have deliberation on this topic by the commission. Would anyone like to begin?
From a marketing standpoint, just uh, and I actually drove that area recently and um at, at night, and it is so dark, um, you can't see a thing. So I personally think that the 20 foot sign, you know, is, would be extremely beneficial for the business. Whereas anything shorter than that, you're just not going to see it, especially at night.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
It's a classic case of caring about businesses very much, uh, which we really, really do. That's where the tax money is. Uh, but caring for the people who live here as well. It's their city. And we have had a request uh for a smaller sign. You've provided an opportunity to do that, and my opinion would be, can we please accept that? It, it's a way of finding a compromise where nobody is materially hurt. That, that would just be my comment.
So there are three options we're discussing, right? The monument sign is one of them. So was that the?
Correct.
I don't see anything but the monument sign personally. I think it's important to take into account the canopy that will be there, that will be lit or the pumping stations. So yes, right now, especially by itself, um, as its only thing out there, um, I, I appreciate the demonstration. I think it's helpful to see what it looked like approaching the sign, but I mean, people are from here. They get accustomed to it. If the prices are right, if it's a business they want to frequent, they'll know to frequent it. Um, so I think keeping it as minimal as possible um would be my position.
Want to say anything?
I, I think 15 foot is where I land.
From my point of view, um, I think the 20 foot, I agree, is the easiest to see and the highest above driver's field division. So it's not going to be, it's going to be the least distraction and therefore I believe is safest.
It's pretty difficult to have a, a gas station sign be that tall.
Yeah, I, I agree. Um, I mean, looking around town, a lot of them, there are a lot of signs in town that seem to be that tall. Yeah. What else? Nothing else to say about that. I do appreciate the applicant and the owner spending the money to have the applicant do all this. We, I spoke on our previous meeting that I really hope we can be friendly to businesses and not, you know, burden them overly. Um, so the, the business desire and, and I agree that with the concerns that we've heard both at this meeting and last meeting, I, I put a lot of faith and credence in the engineer who's doing this and the way things have been in the past. So I, I would be in favor of the 20 foot sign as well. So we're probably going to have a very interesting vote. Does anyone else like to say anything?
Yes, the, just a c- closing comment of the weight of public opinion. And we kind of substitute our opinion for what we heard in testimony here. And in representing the people who live there, I think it's fair to say that 15 foot sign would be their desire. And, and, and it's our responsibility to, to listen to that testimony. So.
All right. If there is no more comments or deliberation,
I will entertain a motion for one of the oper- one of the options presented. 15 foot sign. Do I hear a second? Second. We have moved and seconded the option for the 15 foot sign. Is there any discussion? All right. I will call for a vote. Ben, would you please read the uh roll?
Commissioner Newell. Commissioner Schulte. Commissioner Banford. Commissioner Kowash. Commissioner Grow.
No. I believe the motion does not carry three to two. I will now entertain a second motion for one of the other two alternatives. Is there a second? If no one else wants to second, I will second it. Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? No discussion. I will entertain the roll call to be called for the vote.
Commissioner Newell.
20 foot sign.
Commissioner Schulte. Commissioner Banford. Commissioner Kowash. Commissioner Grow.
Yes. We have not approved that one either. So I will now entertain a motion for the final option of the monument sign.
Shouldn't the monument sign?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the monument sign as before?
I have a question.
Excuse me?
I have a question.
Quest away.
None of them passed, then what?
Then, don't see that we've approved any change to what they've requested.
Yeah, thank you.
Or after none of them pass, we can entertain a motion to try something else.
Thank you.
Okay?
That helps.
We're, we're not done after this one.
Okay.
Okay. At least not, not according to my reading of how things are going. Basically you have to get a feel for what all the conditions are before you can continue with a discussion. Anyway, is there any more discussion or questions? Hearing none. Ben, would you please call the roll? And we are voting on the use of the monument sign, which is at ground level plus about a four foot berm, which I don't remember being part of the earlier one, but it's good to know that at least it's a little more visible now. Please continue.
Commissioner Newell. Commissioner Schulte. Commissioner Banford. Commissioner Kowash. Commissioner Grow.
Also no. Okay. So we are now at an impasse, or at least we all know where we stand with the three options. That one got one positive vote. Uh, so I will now entertain. If someone wants to, well, do we want to discuss other options? Have, have we eliminated the monument sign as an option? Okay. So we're now only talking about a 15 foot or a 20 foot sign? I, I would just, excuse me? Or denying the motion in altogether? Yes.
I would just say in second thought, if I can, that I always, I always try to take the account of the people who live in this city is very important. And one of the things I heard you say that I relate to is the issue of that price being at eye level and driving. And I would almost change my opinion to the 20 foot sign as being in the best interest of the people that live there, even if they don't want it.
It's safer.
You think I'm convinced of that? And so if we took the vote again, I would change my opinion.
That sounds encouraging.
Shall we try that? Shall we try that?
I think we'll try that. Would, I would entertain a motion to uh propose the 20 foot sign. Is there a second? And moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. I would call for.
Commissioner Newell. Commissioner Schulte. Commissioner Banford. Commissioner Kowash. Commissioner Grow.
Yes.
And passed.
Thank you.
Three to two.
All right. The, all right, where am I? Uh, we did vote on the way, did that, we did that, we did that. Motion passes. Not quite unanimously, but it passed. In order reflecting the commission's decision to authorize or allow the 20 foot sign, uh, decision tonight will be mailed to the applicant and all participants of record within 10 business days. And I want to thank all the members of the commission and the members of the public who saw fit to come here and listen. Uh, we hope that it ends up being okay for people. I know, yeah, give it time till you see it, hopefully. Anyway. Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking the time and the 30 days to do this exercise. I appreciate, and please tell the owners that we didn't take it lightly, that they, yeah, it, we really want to support our businesses and we really want them here.
Assuming you made some more money for the extra design you did, at least we supported your business.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down. All right. We have finished with both of the official meeting or proposals. We're now looking at other business, the development code update uh regarding an adjustment to industrial zoning. Would you please, is, there's a little staff report in here. I assume you're going to address that.
Yes, there's actually a couple of bullet points that should have been under development code updates. But uh, yeah, industrial zoning is kind of the hot button one that we've got. Um, we have gotten a, a request from uh some business owners here in town to uh, uh, basically be more flexible in where we allow uh gyms and other indoor recreation kind of uses um to be located. Um, specifically looking at uh being able to do those kinds of uses uh in the industrial zone. Currently, we don't have a, a category specific to indoor recreation. These kinds of uses are classified as retail, sales and service um, being a, uh, an entertainment or, or personal service oriented kind of, of service use. So um, looking at ways that we could be more flexible in how we allow this. Um, we have uh proposed the creation of a new uh indoor uh recreation category. Um, and so there's a exhibit 6B there in your packet. Uh, kind of includes a, a draft of what that definition might look like. Um, and then uh we're looking at changing uh the table of allowed uh uses in the three uh main kinds of zones, the residential, the commercial and industrial districts. Um, all of them already list commercial outdoor recreation as, as a use. Um, and so this would be adding a commercial indoor recreation to those uh zone descriptions and specifying where they, they are allowed and not allowed. Um, as I'm staring at this, um, I'm seeing that the, the proposal that was written down for uh residential districts uh has a copy. districts has a copy paste error. It should be a conditional use for all of the residential districts. I'm not sure why it was only conditional use for one and permitted for the others, but the idea was that it would be all conditional use for the residential districts and then permitted outright in the commercial and industrial districts with the condition or special exception that in the industrial district, any sort of repurposed buildings would require at a minimum of Phase One environmental clearance from DEQ. That being sort of a specific callback to the gym that was built in West Salem that turned out to have been a former lead acid battery recycling facility, thus causing a public health emergency throughout Polk and Marion Counties. So let's not repeat that. So we're repurposing an existing industrial space for a non-industrial use such as this, making sure that that building has a clean bill of health before doing. So obviously that wouldn't apply to new build construction, just repurposed buildings. So as part of your, your packet there, you do have those letters of testimony that we've gotten, as well as the brief little staff report that Tyler Ferrari pulled together for, for your consideration. So the way that we are proceeding with this, we would be looking to do a public hearing for the proposal at the December Planning Commission meeting. And so we'd probably be taking it then to city council, assuming that this is moving forward, probably sometime late in January, just because of the holidays and the, the times that are being taken off by council. So there's a little bit of a gap between when you would see it and when they would see it. It's possible it could move forward faster than that, but that's kind of a city manager level decision on that regard. But that's kind of what we're looking at for that, so wanted to bring that to your attention if you had any discussion or thoughts on this. This would be a, a reasonable time to have that discussion. This is not a public hearing, it's more of a workshop session, so you're free to speak and have thoughts.
Anybody else?
I have mixed feelings about it. I mean, on one side, it's nice to have, like, existing industrial spaces, because then they provide cheaper rent for new services like this, but as Chase mentioned, previous uses can make it difficult to transition a service use into that facility. And then also taking up space from potential new industrial users, that's just one of the things that I have concerns about, because then you have to find new space for industrial space because they're occupied with services. So my preference would be to keep it. Yes, I, I think it's a good point made to have additional space away from downtown, but I think it's a better fit in commercial retail services personally.
Short on industrial, so I'm worried about defraying the ability to use it for other businesses, particularly when we don't have enough businesses. People are going outside of the area to get jobs. It seems like we need to be careful about that now.
Personally, what these folks are saying is they're going to leave our town if we don't do this. That's a bird in the hand, and I hate to see that happen. And I understand their point, they, they'll strangle where they are, so I'd hate to see this, listen.
Shouldn't we build something? Not us.
I think, I think they're looking at something that would cost a little less than these people who own it, obviously.
Not for them specifically.
I think I would, I'm not sure if this is correct, but it's my feeling that these peo, that, that this kind of activity requires a fairly tall ceilinged, large area, and I don't think that's typically what you find in commercial zone properties. You're, you're typically looking at offices and, and normal height things. So I agree with you, and I agree with both of you, that, with all of us probably, that we don't have enough industrial space, but I can understand why Monmouth and Independence in this area and Salem as well have included this exception, because realistically, industrial space is the only kind of building that would be able to serve this kind of client. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. For other reasons, safety among other.
You know, part of what their, what their dilemma was, was that they're growing and they don't have enough room in the area they actually managed to find that would serve their business. So they found a place that's large enough for them to grow and can't do it. They were all set to do it from the, the, what we read, but the building department told them, you can't do that in this, in this zoning, so.
Well, planning department told them that.
Excuse me?
Planning department told them that, but yes.
Somebody did, yeah, okay.
I'll take the blame for that.
That's okay.
That's my zoning code.
It's a whole lot better if somebody lets them do it, and then you have to kick them out, because then you're even more evil. That's just my comment, and so I'm glad you said we could say whatever we wanted. But you're not evil in any means, and I wouldn't want you to be characterized that way. Anyway, even if it is close to Halloween, anyway, going on, does anyone else have anything to say? But I think it's a great idea, and I think, I think being consistent with what other jurisdictions have done is a good direction and a good ability for us to do and, and pursue and find out what the community thinks and what the council thinks.
Salem.
It's everywhere, so it's nice to have that flexibility on the building owner's side, because they are always looking for tenants, and so to be able to have that flexibility to have additional tenants with this type of use is good. But that's the downside, is that by filling that space, it precludes then an industrial user going in. It goes both ways.
I would also point out that we're talking about a place where kids are actually excited about having something to do that doesn't involve keyboards or screens. So in this particular case, I think it's an excellent idea and would, would really recommend, would really hope that we can make this possible, because that's one of the things we've been talking about in Dallas as long as I've lived here, is what do kids do who live in Dallas? And it sounds like this business is providing something, an excellent option for them. So the fact that we can't let them do it bothers me a bit.
Speaking of that, can I go off subject for one second?
I don't know.
The basketball courts go that were next to the, that were next to the city park?
I can, I can talk to that. I mean, I was on the parks board where we did that. The basketball courts are just going to go across the street. They're going to build new basketball courts. And the old ba, because they were, they were going to resurface the basketball courts. That's not a problem.
Apologize.
And I will point out, just because this was educational for me, someone in the community asked, why can't we have lights in the basketball courts to allow us to use them more? And the Public Works Director said, the parks are only open from dawn to dusk, therefore lights are not an option. So that was very insightful for me and could come up again. So anyway, any more discussion or whatever? And where do we go from here?
Yes, before, before we jump on it.
Please.
So at the city council meeting where this was addressed a week or so ago, I can't remember if it was Brian, but one of the staff members discussed vacancy rates in commercial and industrial zones. Do you have that, that info? Because if I recall correctly, they discussed how the commercial buildings in town were essentially full, and there's a, a great deal of industrial zone which isn't being used. Is that?
So I don't have any current figures. The best that I'd be able to cite was our economic opportunities analysis from 2021, which did find that we had a surplus of industrial acreage and a shortage of commercial acreage. But of course, how acreage translates into actual individual businesses is a whole complex process. So broad level, we were short on commercial and had a surplus of industrial, but yeah. And that was 2021, so that's five years ago now, so.
That's what I thought too, from the last cop plan amendment.
Needs analysis?
Yeah. Yeah, so.
We maybe look that up.
Yeah, so the, the 2001 EOA, we had a sizable surplus of industrial. The previous analysis to that had identified a shortage, but that was when the mill was in operation, that's when Prager's was still occupied, and they did a UGB expansion to add even more industrial land. That land was never developed, and those two major uses have left, so there's been some vacancy that has come onto the market, so.
I think that's an excellent point, and I would recommend that we make sure that if we go to a staff report for this, that moving on, that we have those kind of statistics of.
Yes, one of their, one of the requirements, of course, would be to demonstrate compliance with statewide planning rule and comprehensive plan, so.
Reflected from the council meeting was, we've got industrial or commercial space, and it's basically full, which means that industrial space may be out there, and there's extra, but it's, it's. It's not being used, they can't keep a tenant in it. So if we can have some use and occupancy information, if that's available, I would recommend we have that in the report.
I can certainly see what information may be available. The best that my office has is which properties are developed versus undeveloped, but it's entirely possible that the Economic Development Office has more recent, like, actual occupancy rates.
We'll also be able to help you with that, too.
Yeah, so I can certainly see what information we have.
Understand the exception in here correctly, that you're limiting it to the 2,000 square feet? Is that how I read that? I have this range of 2,000 and 10,000, is it being defined differently? Because that would be the other issue that I, if it's, doesn't have a limit, I would maybe suggest having something, because if you create too big of a draw, it can be competing uses to industrial uses where they don't, they're not exactly compatible, the parking issues that come with that, and then also just having trucks and things trying to interact with regular vehicles trying to get into the same space. It's just something to keep in mind.
Yes, so the, the, the exceptions there are talking about retail uses as part of the, the recreation use. And so there's, there's that. If it's more than 2,000 square feet of retail, then the use itself is classified as retail, sales, and service, not indoor recreation. And then the one below that relates to meeting and exhibition areas. If it's more than 2,000 square feet, it's classified as retail, sales, and service. That's consistent with other restrictions elsewhere in the code. And then if it's more than 10,000 square feet of exhibition and meeting area, then it's major event entertainment. That also corresponds to kind of the standards for, for that zoning or that land use category. So that's, that's where those numbers come from. It's to say that, you know, those are other uses defined as a, a size, so.
The only thing we're talking about in this proposal is allowing commercial indoor recreation in the industrial zone, is that correct?
So the proposal here would create the new category, would allow it in the industrial and commercial zones outright, and would allow it in residential uses as a conditional use. Now whether the commission and the city council decide to ultimately approve that is a different question, but that's the proposal that we've assembled thus far.
So I guess.
Since there are, you know, former church buildings and things of that nature, which could, you know, reasonably be converted into these kinds of uses without significant impact to the community, seems like a reasonable.
So the, the text above these three tables is just defining what commercial indoor recreation is?
Yes, so Chapter 1.3 of the development code is the definitions of the different categories.
Commercial indoor recreation is not currently included?
Correct. There is indoor recreation, but there is no definition for indoor recreation.
So this is the proposed text for adding to the development code?
Yes.
Okay.
So Andy, does anyone else want to talk about this subject, and can they? So anyone in the audience or anybody?
It's your, it's your meeting, it's not a public hearing, so.
It's not. I assume, were you guys here to talk about this by any chance? Are you just watching?
Watching.
You don't have to respond, you can just sit there.
It's totally fine, but.
Yes.
Just offering.
Good?
In here.
Yes.
I think that the, the city needs to be looking at allowing some of this stuff, if people will want to see stuff outdoor town, because I work in a different city, and we've got find industrial area that's been open for 15, 18 years, and nothing's been put on it. And a lot of the conditions restrict stuff from, from that. And so you're going to have a lot of open land if we're not taking and actually allowing some of this stuff to be variance.
Sounds good. Well, thank you for coming, too. I hope it's been educational for both of you. It certainly has for us tonight. Did you want to say anything, Daniel? I, I don't know if you're allowed, I was going to ask before, are you allowed to say anything in our meetings?
I think I'm just not allowed to vote on anything. I'm told I was able to join the discussion anytime.
Okay, and I hope you felt okay with being part of the previous discussion if, if you were so brave.
That was, that was a hot one.
You weren't stepping in that, okay. Smart man.
I, I do appreciate what you said about the youth just frequently using these facilities, because I frequently use them, a lot of my friends frequently use them, and that is a, like, de facto place that a lot of student athletes go in the offseason. And I've noticed World Gym has become pretty popular, like, I go at the, at the rush hour, and if they had more room to put things, they, they would. I appreciate what you said about that, though.
Good, well, good, well, thank you. And thank you for being here and putting in the time. Do we have any more discussion?
So as I mentioned, there were two other bullet points that were inadvertently left off of the development code update section. So we talked about indoor recreation facilities. There is also a discussion around changing the allowable uses in the commercial zone or the central business district, I should say, the downtown, with regards to automotive services and industrial services. And so that is something that we will be bringing to you in the, in the near future. So I don't have draft language on that yet, but that is something that, that is, is afoot. And then we are also looking to enact development code update, creating a new zoning district. So the Lacreal master plan called for a mixed-use zoning district. We don't have such a district in our development code. The consultant prepared a draft of what that language would look like, and so now we're looking to actually enact that zoning district into law. Once we have the text on the books, we would then be able to start moving forward on the rezoning of the Lacreal area to match the master plan, but can't do the rezoning until we have text of what that zone would be. So we'll be bringing that to you, I believe, in the December for our Planning Commission hearing as well, so. And then I'm not sure how quickly the downtown allowed uses list will be coming to you, but that's, like I said, something that is afoot. So those are the other two bullet points that I, I regret were omitted from the agenda here. But yeah.
For the heads up, it's always good to know what's coming.
So Chase, do you think that was part of what was stripped out when we were revising all the nodes? When we were, yeah. So they're just saying, we used to have this.
So, right, so we never had a mixed-use zoning district, so there was always kind of the plan that there would be one, it was just never enacted. And then we were, when we were back in July in creating the comprehensive plan update, there was discussion of doing this development code amendment. There was discussion of doing this development code amendment at the same time, and ultimately it was decided to push that off to a later. Date. And so that later date will now be upon us, but.
I I I know I'm really ancient and been here for a little bit, but that one point we had it. It's been a long time, though.
Possibly, so I know they.
We had some provisions related to a node where you could do commercial or strip malls or whatever. And we had some layout as to how you could do that.
So the Lockreall master plan area has always called for, since it was created in ninety eight, has always called for a portion of it to be designated mixed use. There was never any parameters around how that would actually.
Function.
Right.
Destination.
Okay, right. So that's what we're looking to change now.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Do we have any commissioner comments?
So under other business, we do have a item B.
Oops, Commissioner handbook. Thank you. I missed that. Not intentionally.
I think you have a handout on this. How about if I just walk you through it real quick? John's not here. There's no point in spending a lot of time. But just a quick update for what's happened since our last meeting. So by way of a quick refresher here, we agreed at the last meeting to do three things. Or we had already talked to Brian, the city manager, to see what his feelings were toward the creation of a C C I here. And committee for for citizen involvement, and he was very supportive. And what he suggested, instead of doing just a, an overall effort to do best practices and planning commissions, instead of that. To actually make a C C I happen. His comment was, don't study it. Don't think about it. Do it. Make it happen. So that was the outcome of that conversation. I agreed to be in contact with D L C D. Which I have done several times now to see what kind of help they can give us in the formation of this. And I have to say. We're gonna melt our copiers here. If I keep printing what they're sending to me, we have, what, three hundred and fifty pages or something so far?
Over three hundred and fifty pages.
And that's just the start. My answer is this. I don't think D L C D is going to be any help to us. Say, I say that because as we get into how C C I is supposed to be formed. It's very lax in terms of, it 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 leaves a lot of authority here in the city. It's basically do whatever you want. I exaggerate a little bit, but there's very little actual guidance. And these three hundred and fifty pages of stuff about how you do equitable engagements and toolkits and I'm like, I don't know what that is. So I don't think we're going to get much from D L C D. The third thing we agreed to do was to draft an announcement to the mayor and the city council. Basically say we're in the process of studying this. We want you to know that this is happening. We want you to know what the probable outcome is going to be. John has signed off on that memo. Thank you for the correction that you gave me. So that's ready to go shortly. So the city council knows that this is pending. So let let me just give you a little bit beyond that. Because there is no statewide C C I handbook, it means we need to create our own rules here. I'm a great fan of Chat G P T. I gave it the task of creating. A Dallas C C I handbook for us, and it did that. It is a very rough, a very crude draft, but it's a place to start from. And I think it's a really good place to start from. We're not going there tonight because it's detailed. But I just want to say that we have that as a discussion point for what, at the end of this, I'm going to ask for our next meeting. What our next meeting is going to look like, and that document is something that we would go through together. For the first rough look at what a C C I handbook would look like. We have that. So the next step, what I'm asking for us to do, there is a lot for us to discuss. I've done a lot of homework. I'm asking that we create a meeting just on this subject, not. Shoehorned in with our regular planning. I don't know what you call that, if it's called a workshop or whatever it's called. That we have a separate meeting because there's so much for us to go through. And the other point is nobody's gonna do it for us. Hey, Tori, you know, you asked the question, why do I keep bringing this up?
Why do I just ask if this is gonna be an ongoing, every. Plan commission conversation?
The answer, the answer is, it has to be.
And it sounds like a committee for citizen involvement is not planning commission. It seems like a separate committee.
That's why we need a separate me. It could be a separate committee. We have in our comprehensive, our comprehensive plan. Says it'll be part of the planning commission. It says that.
Are involved in the comprehensive plan.
And and it should be here, but it doesn't have to be. But that's that's the conversation that we need to have. But my my point is, it's not elective whether we want to do this. It's the law. And we have to be compliant with the law. In addition to which, it's a fabulous opportunity for us to to provide greater value to this city. And as we get into this more, as I have been. The value I think we can bring to this city is just so far beyond what we do right now. Just a quick look here, the kinds of things we need to discuss at that next meeting. So who owns this project? Who decides what, to your question, what form this is actually going to take, who's going to lead this, and on and on and on. I've done a lot of homework to answer all of those questions, but we need to take the time to go through them together and to put some meat on the bones. At the end of the day, here's what. I suggest is actually going to come out of this. What's going to come out of this is something very, very simple. That we have a laser focus for what this group is going to take on as an additional responsibility. Given the limited resources that we have. That's a reality, and we have what we have. What I'm going to propose is so simple. Is to hire a consulting group to do much of the work for us to obtain stakeholder. Input on land use policy. It's provided for under the law. We have to have a budget. The city is required to have a budget for us to do that. And I'm saying rather than us trying to reach out into the community and gather input, we hire experts to do this, do that for us. I have a list of who they are, what they cost, how we go about it, all that kind of stuff. We're not going to get into that tonight. So in other words, we don't have to be experts in going out and getting. The feelings of the community. There are people who can do that for us, that we do that every three years. Not every five years, not every year. I'll I'll give you the precedent for that when we have our meeting. Later. And that we provide the funding for it, which, by the way, in the material that Chat G P T did, it gave us grants. That are available to us to pay for that, which I thought that was kind of cool, so. At the end of the outreach, where we have, we have a consulting group that goes out into all of our stakeholders, not just taxpayers, businesses. Nonprofits, so on and so forth. I don't know if you remember, we met about a year ago. I talked about the the land use policy process in England. I don't know if anybody remembers that. Is exactly what I'm talking about here. They go out, they have experts that go out in the community. Interview the stakeholders, mountains of data they come back with. Their charge is to boil that down to ten bullet points. That go on the wall in this chamber, which effectively is the mandate from the people here of what we want our city to look like in twenty five and fifty years. It's not dissimilar to what we do all the time here. Here we have Dallas Vision twenty thirty, which is essentially the same thing. It's a deliverable that says, in short. This is what the people who live here want their community to be like. That would basically be. The end deliverable that comes out of this whole effort. And those findings would go to the city council. They'd go to the city council with recommendations on what, if anything, needs to change. In our comprehensive plan codes or elsewhere to comply with that. And of course, it's up to the city council to decide. What they do and do not want to change. So in a nutshell, that's, instead of getting involved in five hundred pages of. Due process and bureaucracy and all that kind of stuff, I'm just saying every few years, we do this. Survey and the deliverable goes to the city council with recommendations. And in that way, we get ourselves to the strategic level of land use policy and not just the tactical level. So the bottom line is the request for a full meeting where we can really get into this, and I have to leave that in your hands, so.
My vision of us trying to put this together is the blind leading the blind, so that's a great idea. Thank you.
Anybody else? All the provision is there to do it. I mean, it's not like we're inventing something. It's recommended by the state that we do exactly what we're proposing to do.
It's interesting that if this is a law, the Land Use Board doesn't have any guideline for doing it.
And that we've never done it. I can't explain why that is. Or I say never. I think you pointed out.
I've done it. In a limited fashion. It was part of planning commission. And at some point, community development. In city Dallas decided it needed to land elsewhere. So they took it from planning commission and moved it. I don't know where it went. It's not my problem to worry about that. I don't know if it went to city council. I don't know if it went to another organization. Another. Group. I have no idea. I just know that's what happened.
Maybe your first task would be to do whatever research you can to figure out where it went. Because if we start to do it and somebody else is doing it.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a problem.
We have, we have, we have done that. Brian?
If, yes.
Brian has researched that for us.
Oh, and he said no?
He had given us the documentation that he got from the archives here. He's provided that to us. And the end result of all that is that what supersedes all of that is what's in the comprehensive plan, which says that belongs here. So our go forward is already done. We don't have to, we don't have to create anything else. We really were positioned to.
Did he answer the question that?
Where do you go?
Doing it?
Yes.
He did?
Yes.
Okay.
No, nobody. That's why he.
But no one else is doing it.
Correct. That's why he is, that's why he is so.
That was my concern is that are we gonna get down the road about fifty percent and then? All of a sudden, we find out this other organization is doing it.
It's one thing to have the legal ability and the justification for doing it that you can show in somebody's face.
Yeah, but.
But you don't want to have there be a face there that's saying, hey, we're doing this.
And and you don't want to have that political cloud of saying, well, it's ours, so we're gonna take it. I mean, it's probably better to find out is, is it belonging to someone else and maybe we need to bring it back? And work through those without conflict?
So he has done that research, and that is why he is, he is so strongly recommending.
I see, because it just isn't anyway.
He's one hundred percent in favor of it.
Thank you. That helps.
And providing the resources to do it.
Yes.
So I just have to leave that in your hands and. But it's gonna be a long meeting because there's a lot to discuss.
Yes, to that end, if we're gonna dedicate a whole meeting to it, there's been a lot of talk, but not a lot of substance or detail. So hopefully that would be flushed out and we can be productive rather than. A lot of the. I don't know, conceptualization and get into the details and nuance. No, definitely not.
I have for that next meeting. A summarized description of how this process works start to finish. I have that ready. And that's, that's the skeleton upon which we would turn to experts to put the flesh on this, which, by the way, is really simple. This is not rocket science. It really isn't. The rocket science comes from the consulting group. All we're doing is defining a process and the funding of that process and getting this to. The city council so that they they buy in as well as our city manager has. So.
And they're, they're not just gonna buy in. They're gonna have some adjustments probably for what our focus is and and that's great. That's fine. That's what they do. You know, the political spin and all the rest has to be included.
Part of the recommendation that we'll get to in our meeting is that we include people from. The city, an individual from the city council to be on this task group as long as, as well as from the economic development department. That would be.
Mike?
So volunteering? This is why you don't come to the meeting.
Yeah.
But please return. We promise not to volunteer.
We won't put you on the spot next time, promise.
So that we're not in a hole, digging a hole for ourselves. We're staying as as a community. Let's see if this, if this initiative will move us ahead, so.
That's the case. The way that that sounds like a committee is being structured is you'll probably have a couple of members from planning commission, maybe one or two counselors. People from various groups, maybe even people from the community. So it'll be a separate committee outside. I mean, yes, they will inform us of what being discussed. But it won't be an ongoing planning commission.
And and there may be benefit to having it as a separate body because it's entirely possible that there's community folks out there who would love to be part of this. You know, getting the finger on the pulse of the community kind of thing, the, you know, the social butterflies, what have you. Who would have no interest in sitting through public hearings like we do for the other planning commission things, so. It's feasible that having it be a separate one could make some level of sense.
What, to what extent you folks use Chat G P T? It's unbelievably powerful research. It just blows my mind how.
We literally can't get to it through our firewall here at the office.
It just fry your brain. The the answer to all of these questions, it has, it has. It has created for us the menu of. Options for us to select from. So for example, who runs this committee? Who's on it? For what period of time? Who appoints them? Blah, 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 blah. It's given us all those options. And it's given then a recommendation at the bottom. So we have a lot of this homework done. So for example, it is possible, if we want to do it. That nobody on the plant. It is possible that nobody on the planning commission is is on this committee or everybody or everything in between. So it's, all those options are there for us. And so I'm prepared to walk, or G P T has prepared us to walk through that. A lot of homework's been done. A lot of homework's been done.
I would urge caution using A I that it may give you all kinds of answers that sound very official and true. But you don't know where any of that came from or whether it's real.
So I do know where they came from.
All good.
I did chapter and verse. And by the way, we have some experts here every step of the way with us. And and as we get in. And as, and as we get into this, so one of the concerns is like, who's gonna do the work? And it's not like you're sitting around here all day with nothing to do.
Good. I'm glad you recognized that.
Chase, it sounds like you're gonna get more.
So what Brian said to us as we were leaving is that it's his responsibility and his staff to provide the services to us. For this kind of an initiative. But if those resources are limited, we have to be very conscious of that. So. The difficulty tonight is we want to get out of here. And we we need a serious meeting so that I can share with you what we've, what we've already done. And it's a lot. But when we get through with it, never lose sight of the fact, it's really simple. We have to, we have to talk about a lot of things. But at the end of the day, what we're actually going to do is not rocket science.
I would like John Swanson to be here, too, since he's been with you as you go through this process. It would be nice to have him as a consistent feature in that conversation.
Of course. He 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 knows everything I just said. Well, he doesn't know what this conversation is. He's been copied and everything. He's been in the meeting with me, so. That's why I'm saying let's not go there tonight.
Well, and I would say that with, you know, just staff schedules, holidays coming up, we probably wouldn't be able to schedule a special meeting until probably February at the earliest. Because we have, you know, Thanksgiving just around the corner, and then you've got the whole December Christmas holiday thing, so.
Been a real world.
I know, right?
So, yeah.
One thing about government is that the wheels turn slowly.
Well, if we don't have a lot on the next. Docket, so to speak, for our meeting, I mean. Or.
And let's, let's, let's not.
Have a number of items on the next month's agenda. We'll also be having discussion on rent burdened communities. We do that every year for the December meeting, so.
December's out. Our, our wonderful staff member knows of which they speak. All right, Commissioner comments, not about the previous discussion. No Commissioner comments. All right. No Commissioner comments. All right, staff comments. Your only, oh, Benjamin has his hand up. What can we do for you, Benjamin?
Just a friendly reminder, Commissioner Banford, Commissioner Kowash, December thirty first, your term will be expiring. Staff strongly encourages you to reapply. If you'd like to continue, we've greatly appreciated your service here on the commission.
How long?
I will work on it.
Carol, Carol, how long have you been doing this?
Honestly, I don't know. It's been a very long time.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for that. And I hope you will be applying.
I will.
Otherwise we'll have to draft some rules to draft you, but I don't think we're allowed to do that. This isn't that country yet. Anyway, all right, with no further comments, this meeting is adjourned and thank you all very much and especially thank you two for coming. I hope it was an educational and enjoyable, if nothing else.